Please call to order.
Let us pray. As town meeting members, we are here to speak, listen, learn, and decide. For this, we ask for help to apply the gifts each of us possesses. We ask for this help from the higher powers that each of us interprets and is beholden to. We ask that a light be shined upon us to give us the gifts of understanding and guidance. We ask for the gift that allows us to use our reason to solve instead of divide. We ask for the gift of the actual solutions to issues. We ask for the gift of understanding all ideas and values, especially those that are different or opposed to ours. We ask for the gifts of insight to help us untangle confusion and complication decisions we will need to bank. We ask for the gift of fortitude, especially when our efforts seem to be lost and we feel like giving up. Especially, we ask for this gift when we are faced with difficult and emotional decisions. We ask for the gift of knowledge and understanding to see the truth about the issues we face here, our surroundings, our town, and even the world around us. We ask for the gift of consensus building rather than tearing down. Reconciliation rather than polarization. Finally, we ask for the gift of any clear understanding of the issues we face here and the purpose for which we face them. This gift should allow us to get a fair and equitable decision in action. We ask that all these gifts be granted to us. Amen.
Now the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Operating the cameras for full coverage tonight, I'm Mark Sylvester and Laura Davis. Our checkers tonight are Heather Tate and Debbie Madison. The clerk will now read the warrant.
Hello? Okay, there we go. To any of all the constables of the town of Redding greetings. Okay, can I yell? In the name of the county of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Redding qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the Redding Memorial High School Performing Arts Center, 62 Oakland Road, and said Redding on Monday, January 28, 2013, at 7:30 o'clock in the evening, at which time and place in the following articles are to be acted upon and determined exclusively by the town meeting members in accordance with provisions of the Redding Home Rule Charter.
Mr. Goldie moves, we dispense with further reading except for the return. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries.
By the virtue of the warrant, I on January 9, 2013 notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Redding qualified to vote on town affairs to meet at the place and the time specified and posted attested copies of the town meeting warrant in the following public places within the town of Redding. Precinct 1, Warren Killam School. Precinct 2, Redding Police Station. Precinct 3, Redding Memorial Light. Precinct 4, Joshua Eaton School. Precinct 5, Redding Library. Precinct 6, Burrows School. Precinct 7, Birch Meadows School. Precinct 8, Wood End School and at Town Hall. The date of the posting being not less than 14 days prior to January 11, 2013, the date set for town meeting in this warrant. I also caused the posting of the warrant to be published on the town of Redding website on January 11, 2013.
The clerk has a few announcements?
Two things. One is that, as you can see from up here, you now have access to the wireless Wi-Fi from this point going forward. This will be offered at all town meetings. One of the things that we're looking to is, I will be sending out an email to all town meeting members asking you your preference if you would prefer to receive the warrant report by PDF or by paper copy. The idea being that you can bring in your iPads or whatnot to view the warrant that way. Over the last two weeks, you should have received three emails from me with updates of what's been going on with the warrant report. If you have not received those, that means that I either do not have your email address or I have an incorrect email address. I got a few undeliverables back. If we don't have your email address, please make sure that Heather or Debbie outside has the correct information, as we will be doing quite a bit of communication to town meeting members in the future via email. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now ready to begin. Business under Article 1. Mr. Goldie moves that we lay Article 1 on the table. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, the motion carries. Oh, you're not hearing me? That's better, okay. We just, we'll retake that. We had a motion to lay Article 1 on the table. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. Those opposed, and the motion carries. Business under Article 2. Mr. Goldie moves that we lay the substance of Article 2 on the table. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries. Business under Article 3. Mr. Goldie.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms... Thank you, Mr. Moderator. How can we not get this right? Seriously. Unbelievable. Move that the town vote to amend the FY 2013 to FY 2022 capital improvements program as printed in the report on the warrant, special town meeting, January 28, 2013, as provided for in Section 7-7 of the Redding Home Rule Charter.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Lillisher?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Delai and I will make a brief presentation before we get to the substance of Article 3, much as we did in November, about some of the larger capital projects facing the town. We'll leave the library for Article 6, but a number of people have asked for a refresher on the other four. So if I can invite Mary up for the first two school items?
Ms. Delai.
Good evening, town meeting members. No, that's all right. Thank you. I just wanted to first, Superintendent Doherty just asked me to let you know that he wanted to be here to present, but he actually had eye surgery today and is forbidden from driving, so I am here in his place. I've been asked to basically provide an update to you, a brief update, about where we stand on two projects. One is the elementary space options, space alternatives, and related mostly to full day, the move to full-day kindergarten for all children, as well as the expansion potentially of RISE preschool offerings. And the second being the Killam, primarily the Killam Accessibility Project. That's the main thrust of the project. With respect, and this is just an overview, not much has changed at this point in time with regard to the elementary space options. If you recall, back at November town meeting, we presented a number of potential options for us to be able to obtain the necessary space to allow us to offer full-day kindergarten for all children in Redding. The projects or the options ranged from leasing modulators at each elementary school. And if you recall, we need essentially five or six classrooms, depending upon enrollment. So the first option was to lease modulators for each elementary school. And you can see behind me that the cost range for this would be between $1.5 and $2 million. This is essentially a short-term solution. The proposal would have been to lease the modulators, and this is kind of a bridge solution between temporary and permanent space. It is the least desirable from a community perspective, and by that I mean, there was a survey that was issued that was pretty well responded to, and those survey results showed that this was the least desirable option, was to put modulators at our elementary school. The second option was to build additional classroom space at each elementary school. And the range, and these are very preliminary ranges, these are certainly not ranges that I would hang my hat on, but preliminarily, I would say this, based on the Frank Locker report that we had done, ranged from $6 million to $9 million. And it's still questionable exactly how much space we would get from this, given the existing footprints and the amount of land available. But we would probably be looking at 11,000 to 15,000 square feet, which is not a whole lot of land. And it is likely to only be feasible at a few buildings, again, based on footprints. The fourth option that we are investigating is to potentially purchase existing space in the community and renovate that space. Obviously, again, the cost depends upon the space that was obtained and what needed to be done at that space, but we are carrying an approximate cost range of 7 to 10 million dollars. Depending on what the existing use of the space is, this may not be MSBA reimbursable, and we would certainly want a space that would be large enough to accommodate not just the existing full-day K projections, but future enrollment, as well as potentially expansion of RISE preschool programs. So we would be looking to accommodate between 12 and 14 classrooms. The fourth option that was examined was to build a new early childhood center or elementary school. And that cost range right now is between 21 million and 32 million. And again, that would depend upon the size of the facility to be built. It would have the longest timeframe from to completion, given MSBA deadlines and also the length of the construction process itself. Right now, in all of the work that we are doing, we are targeting and seriously looking at Options 2 and 3. So our feeling is that this would be the most cost-effective and manageable from a price perspective. So someplace in the middle of, between, somewhere in the range of 6 to 10 million dollars is what we're looking at for a possible option to address the space that we would need to be able to provide free full-day kindergarten for all kids, as well as potentially expansion of preschool programs. The second update I wanted to provide for you is on the Killam project. If you recall, we actually submitted a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for a proposed project for the Killam Elementary School that included ADA accessibility upgrades, handicap accessibility upgrades. It also included some renovations to the main office to expand the size of the main office and to improve the layout for the functions needed in that office, as well as a fire protection system, which is something that would have been triggered as a requirement based on the construction we were doing to that building or would be doing to that building, to replace the windows in all of the classrooms and to replace the gymnasium floor. And that carried an estimated project cost of 5.1, almost 5.2 million dollars. The MSBA share, if we had been successful in getting the MSBA to invite us in and accept this project for funding, would have been 47.21 percent, or 2.44 million, leaving the town share at 2.72 million. We were not invited into the eligibility period this past year, and in discussions with MSBA, they have said that a lot of this has to do with their, where the Killam School is in the condition index. The condition index is an index that MSBA uses to assess the condition, overall condition of the school. It's on a scale of 1 to 5, 5 being the worst. And Killam is rated as a 2. There are just so many other projects in Massachusetts, so many other schools that have a condition rating far worse than Killam does, that made this project low on their priority list. So we are currently evaluating what we call a Plan B. And with Plan B, what we've decided to do is to look at just the ADA accessibility improvements, no type of project creep or scope enhancement, just straight out the ADA accessibility improvements, the majority of which are to the bathrooms in the building. Installing the fire protection system, which again, would be required due to the level of construction, and replacing all the windows. We're fairly confident that the MSBA would provide us with funding for the windows because they did approve this at one point in time. And if you recall, we had to drop that from the scope and remain, and only stay with the roof replacement part of the scope. So we did have the roof replaced, and MSBA did pay for 47.21 percent of that. We're fairly confident that under their accelerated repairs program, which is a very different program from their main building program, that we may be qualified for this project, as I said, because we did before. If we just applied or submitted a statement of interest for the window portion of the project, we would be looking at about $436,000 from MSBA. The difference would have to come from the town, and that would be 3.2, almost 3.3 million dollars, with a difference of 500, almost $570,000 to the town. So the advantage of doing Plan B is that we would get this done sooner. It would come with a higher cost, higher price tag to the town. There would be some funding from MSBA. The other option to look at is to see if MSBA will pay not only for the windows, but also for the fire protection. We think this has a very low probability, but nonetheless are prepared to ask for that. Under that scenario, they, we would look for funding of about $968,000, and the remaining 2.7, almost 2.8, would be the town share. And that's only actually $37,000 higher than what we were proposing back in September of 2011 and presented to you at that time. So just to summarize, you know, with respect to the full-day kindergarten and early childhood, we're carrying a price range of 6 to 10 million. And the highest amount here for the Killam Accessibility Project and building improvements for the town would be three, almost 3.3 million dollars.
Mr. Lillisher?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thanks, Mary. There's two other projects I want to go over quickly, and then I'll wrap it up by kind of comparing all four. One is downtown Phase 2, which a lot of you heard about in November. That's, and I have a map to show you. It's a continuation, if you will, of the Main Street project down right outside of Town Hall. It does encompass a lot of the downtown businesses, and you can see the improvements listed. In addition, it costs about $5 million. That's the current estimate. And the staff estimates we'd be eligible for a grant through Mass Works. It could be anywhere from half a million to a million and a half. And because of some of our affordable housing work, it's possible it's more than a million and a half, but we don't really know how to gauge the odds on that. Here's a quick map. It's largely down by the train station and High Street and up Haven Street. The other thing we discussed in November was the water distribution master plan, and a study came out suggesting the town had about $25 million in water main repairs that was needed over some future period of time. Couple weeks ago, staff presented to the Board of Selectmen in a budget meeting a proposal to do all that work within the water budget over the next many years. The work itself is spread out over a minimum of 15 years and would be paid for over a minimum of 25 years. The initial phase, which is the most important thing right on our horizon now, which probably will be proposed to April Town Meeting as part of the water budget, would cost $6 million. And that's work that's generally, most of that work is very important for the quality of the water. $4 million of the $6 million, happily through Pete's work, is interest-free loans that the MWR has agreed to advance a several years' worth all at once, which is certainly great news. To summarize all these projects and how they fit together, currently, the high school is a little bit more than the high school, there's a couple small elementary schools. But the $400,000 home in Redding is paying $162 right now for the, what is primarily the high school project. That'll decline over the next 11 years until it's repaid to just under $150. The library that's in front of you in Article 6, at just under $10 million, works out to be about $150 a household for 10 years, somewhat similar to what's left on the high school. Full-day kindergarten, I can narrow that range, but the wide range was 2 to 32 million. So if you take something in the 6 to 10 million dollar area, you're looking at about $100 a household for 10 years, possibly $125 a household for 10 years. Killam on either side of 3 million, depending on the two options Mary mentioned, is about half that. It's about $40 to $50 a household for 10 years. Downtown Phase 2, again, depending on the level of grant, could be a little bit higher, $50 to $60, $5 a year. And then that water, just Phase 1, the $6 million only, would be $90, $80 a household for 10 years, if not done inside the water budget. So many people in town meeting and some of the boards up front here have asked for this kind of summary, just to be reminding you of where the library in particular falls, but all the other projects that are on the horizon. For Article 3, again, just as a quick reminder, this is to place items in the capital plan. There's five things that are proposed to change. Three of them are actually proposed then in Article 4 to be voted on. The three items that I'll ask you to vote on in the next article are all school facilities. I can go into some detail on this, but I'll just give a quick overview. Parker Middle School has padding at each end of the gymnasium, but if you're like me and you're crashing into the walls, not at the convenient place, it's good to have padding all around, and $25,000 would fix that problem. For those of you not familiar with the situation, the 8th grade class in Redding is about as large as Stonem's entire school population, and they'll be moving into the high school next year. So the high school needs furniture, and there's a 10 to 12-week period of lead order period needed for furniture. So they really would prefer to order it even now, not wait till April Town Meeting. So they've requested that funding. And lastly, and I don't really want to go into a lot of detail, there's some security systems upgraded needed at more than one school for $27,500 that the schools and the police department agree on. Those three items, again, will be requested in the next article. And then two small changes are made to the capital plan beyond that that we'll discuss in April. One is a fire station furniture request, and as Mary mentioned, the Killam debt exclusion is now clearly at minimum moved out one year.
FinCom report, Ms. Perry?
FinCom met on January 9, 2013, and voted 8-0-0 to support the subject matter of this article.
Is there further discussion? None appearing. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion under Article 3, please raise your hand. Those opposed, and the motion carries. Business under Article 4, Mr. Greenfield.
Move that the town vote to amend the following votes taken under Article 13.
Mr. Goldie moves that we dispense with the further reading of the motion. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries. Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Lillisher?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To reiterate, those three capital requests are in front of you, totaling 77,500. We have a $46,000 request to fund debt service. The assessors have been diligently working off some old abatement applications and settling them. They have an overlay fund. By law, they can pay the principal amount, but they cannot pay the interest amount. That has to go through town meeting. So in your article, I've described a little bit more about what the settlements were, and in some cases, they go back a few years. And the interest rate is very high. It's set by state law. It's not half a percent. It's much higher. For finance wages, we're requesting a $7,000 transfer. The presidential election costs $10,000 to $12,000 more than we budgeted. Largely, that was because school was in session, and we hadn't necessarily anticipated that. I also know that there's likely to be two special elections in the spring if Senator Kerry leaves. And we'll wait and see. In the past, when Senator Kennedy died, the state did fund those elections, but I have not heard anything about whether the state will fund those, so we may be back to you on that. In finance expenses, some of this is learning on our part. As you know, we went out of civil service a year ago, or almost a year ago, and we decided to have a promotion system where there'd be an assessment center, which we do at Town Hall, but we'd have professionals do it. And this would really put the best candidate forward for a police promotion. So these have been done in the past, certainly for the chief, I know it was done. And we're just asking for a $10,000 transfer as a one-time thing to pay for their sergeant's exam. And as largely a housekeeping item, I stood in front of you in November and asked for some money to be transferred from veterans pending an agreement that we still haven't actually signed, but we believe we've reached with Melrose, Wakefield, and Saugus. It'll probably become effective sometime between April and June of this calendar year. And so I'm asking a transfer from wages to expenses, because in our regional arrangements, when the other community is the employee's host, if you will, we pay that as an expense instead of a wage.
FinCom report, Mrs. Herrick.
FinCom discussed the subject matter of this warrant article on January 9 at our meeting, and we voted 8-0-0 in favor of this warrant article.
Further discussion? None appearing. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion under Article 4, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries. Business under Article 5, Mr. Arena.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $500 from free cash for the payment during fiscal 2013 of the following bill remaining unpaid from the previous years for services actually rendered to the town. Nixon-PBDD LLP for legal work on an escrow account.
Is there a second? Second? Ms. Angstrom?
As just stated, the Nixon-PBDD bill is for legal services related to the advanced refunding of debt that took place in March of 2012. However, the bill was not received until November, eight months after the services were rendered. Further review of the bill revealed that the bill has not been paid prior and is in fact still due.
FinCom report, Mr. McNeese.
Finance Committee recommends the subject matter of this article by a vote of 8-0-0 at their January 9, 2013 meeting.
Is there further discussion? None appearing. This requires a nine-tenths vote. We will try hand count first. If it's unanimous, I will declare it as such. Otherwise, we'll take a standing count. All those in favor of the motion on Article 5, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And we will take a standing count. Mr. Van Magnus, would you take the right, my right plus the FinCom? Mr. Crook, would you take the right of center? And Mr. Rushworth, would you take the left of center? And Mr. Pacino, would you take my left plus the Board of Selectmen? All those in favor of the motion, please rise. Twenty-three? Excuse me? Twenty-three? Twenty-three, thank you. Fred?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Phil? Either Phil. Thirty-seven? Forty-two. And those opposed?
Zero.
Zero. Zero? Zero?
One?
One?
Zero.
Zero. The vote being 141 in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion carries. Business under Article 6, Mr. Curtis.
Motion under Article 6. Move that the town raise by borrowing or appropriate the sum of $14,900,000 for the purpose of renovating and expanding the Redding Public Library located at 64 Middlesex Avenue, including the costs of consulting services, audits, plans, documents, cost estimates...
Mr. Goldie moves that we dispense with the further reading. Is there any objection? None appearing. Is there a second? Second? Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I start, we wanted to take a moment to make sure everyone has a copy of the handouts. If anyone doesn't, if you could raise your hand, and we'll get you one. They were in the back. They were in the back. Thank you for coming out tonight on a slippery night. I'm David Hutchinson, Chairman of the Library Board of Trustees. Mr. Moderator, I request more time than ten minutes. I suspect I'll have a few more.
Okay. Is there objection if he goes over the time? None appearing. Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you. So, we're requesting your approval to proceed with a proposed library renovation and expansion project of the Reading Public Library. This is a cost-effective but complete solution accompanied by substantial assistance from the state. Implementation of this project will result in a modern yet familiar library, a permanent and enduring facility, and a service program requiring minimal investments for thirty to fifty years. It is an exciting and unique opportunity, but fully comports with Reading's demand for value, prudent frugality, and high service level. I am hopeful that much of what I say tonight will be reminders rather than revelations. I request your indulgence to elaborate on a few points about libraries generally, and the Reading Library in particular, its challenges and the proposed project. While we are here to discuss and ultimately make a financial decision, I think it is important to remember the context beyond simple bricks and mortar. So, why does any community value a free public library? Because in different ways, it serves every member of the community across the spectrum of ages, interests, economic circumstances, and needs, without cost to the patron. It's a school, a senior center, a cultural center, a meeting place, and a nearly limitless resource for knowledge. Libraries are a core partner for education and literacy, serving as an extension of our public school system, supporting the teachers and students with curriculum and enrichment. It's the town's early literacy center, a library and librarians who are child's first teachers. It's where parents bring their children to be introduced to reading and modeling that behavior. My mother lives in a different town, and she advised me not to lead with kids in education tonight. It might not resonate with the older taxpayers, she said. However, a very recent survey of the Pew Research Center notes that, quote, "Americans are most adamant that libraries should devote resources to services for children. Over eight in ten Americans say that libraries should definitely coordinate more closely with local schools in providing resources to kids. A similar number, eighty-two percent, strongly support libraries offering free early literacy programs to help young children prepare for school." Sorry, Mom, but I had to lead with that. Still, a library is a destination, a physical place to go, for nearly every demographic for many reasons: for study, for reading, for group study, for company, for materials, for programs, for knowledge, for research, for help. We should not forget or discount the physical use of libraries. A library offers free space, resources, and materials to anyone. They are heavily visited by everyone, every day, every open hour. While we are sensitive to the costs imposed on taxpayers by this kind of project, let's also be mindful of the extensive services and destination for those in need. A good library is a safe, inviting place for those who may not have other good alternatives. Library offers free access to books, eBooks, DVDs, music, research materials, games, magazines, computers, the Internet. You can try things out without having to pay, and thus broaden your horizons easily and without risk. Whatever you want, no matter what your age or interests, the library will try to get it for you. Libraries, especially Reading, serve as a logistics hub for an entire regional network, a virtual library like a free Amazon. Libraries also enable lifelong learning and enrichment for all ages. They're the place to find help for all kinds of problems and answers to all kinds of questions. In a moment, I will give you a few examples of the reading and learning programs available in Reading. And I can't tell you how hard it is to say "reading" when I mean reading and "Reading" when I mean Reading. I'm doing my best. Libraries serve as the community commons, a town's cornerstone for culture, diversity, awareness, and tolerance. They offer many cultural programs, including music performances, author appearances, and classes. Libraries also act as a reservoir of memory, linking the past, the future, and the possibilities of tomorrow. And finally, they are the public face of the community. A library reflects the character and priorities of a community. According to the same Pew Research report, even in the digital age, libraries continue to serve a variety of functions, with nearly sixty percent of respondents having had some kind of interaction with the library in the last twelve months, and ninety-one percent saying that public libraries are important to their communities. So, why is the Reading Library special? The foregoing is just about libraries generally. I hope you realize how intensely the town of Reading uses and values its library, and how unique it is among Massachusetts libraries. No two libraries are alike. They are as individual as the communities that they know and support. So, what's special about the Reading Public Library? Well, let's start with our staff, who make it all work with a spirit of friendliness, helpfulness, and warmth. In our community surveys, the staff were universally praised. The extensive programs, extraordinary circulation, overwhelming visitation, and facility struggles are all managed by this group of dedicated, passionate people. So, who visits the physical Reading Library? On average, fifteen thousand visitors every month who borrow up to thirty to thirty-five thousand items per month, comprising every demographic group. This is well above the average for a comparably sized community. So, we do like our library. Reading has over sixteen thousand active library card users, thousands of parents and toddlers who attend hundreds of programs each year, thousands of students who come to study, to learn, and be tutored, seniors who come daily to read periodicals and meet friends, patrons who pose on average five thousand questions to library staff every month, and in the summer months, closer to eight thousand, thousands of residents who attend hundreds of cultural and educational programs annually, job seekers who research opportunities across and access the computers, et cetera, the thousand children that participate in the summer reading program every year, and the many civic and municipal groups. Let me offer a few examples of the programs that are offered, in addition to the materials and all the people that come. There are twenty early literacy programs per month, from infant toddler sing-alongs to storytimes for all ages, various teen programs with different themes, various reading programs such as summer Sizzler, book group nights, spring book talks. These are all different programs designed to get people in and talk about books, four monthly book discussion groups, one of which has been meeting for over fifteen years consistently, a new Massachusetts Author Series, a year-long program of readings, discussion, and author visits encompassing the works of seven Massachusetts authors. Also offer a learning program such as Live Wires, an award-winning lifelong learning series with forty to a hundred people show up for various topics, monthly job skill series to unemployed and underemployed Reading residents. In fact, there's been feedback from many attendees who find jobs as a result of the program trainings and networking. And job services also include a career center. Annual discussion groups, English at Large Conversation Circles. Services, in addition to basic services and the programs, which are just examples of what I just listed, the Reading Public Library also offers community outreach, such as the following: many presentations, workshops, tutorials, covering everything from choosing the best new books to downloading ebooks, all tailored to specific Reading needs and requests. Senior citizen services, including homebound delivery to an average of thirty households per month, deposit collections at the various elderly centers around town, monthly book discussions, and an annual review at the Pleasant Street Senior Center. Regular enrichment programs at the schools, providing resource materials to the schools. For teens, there are services such as the annual sixth grade library tour, school visits, annual middle-class author's visit. You can see there's a lot going on. There are teen volunteer programs, get the teens interested in the library, the net guides, high school students, helping people with their technical issues, teen advisor group, Volantines. My son is a proud alumnus of the Volantines program. Very good. The Reading Library staff seeks out funds to supplement community resources, so they work and leverage what we have. Over the last few years, they have secured grants to fully fund special programs, including a health fair, environmental literacy, lifelong learning programs, and mass memories. I know this is a long list, and these are only a few examples, but for our discussion tonight, I want you to have a sense of the dynamic world of the library beyond simply the lending of materials and just walking in and seeing it. There's a lot going on. So, the current proposal derives from the recognition of three important and interdependent realities. First, the age, condition, and increasing dysfunction of the current building, the dramatic changes in Reading's library usage and future needs, and the relatively rare availability of substantial state assistance for library construction. With respect to the condition of the building, we have provided extensive detail in the handouts and the pictures running behind me. About half of them are bad, the other half is good. So, I don't want to spend too much time cataloging all the issues, but be aware of a few facts, which I'm sure many of you are. The building is a hundred nineteen years old, was designed as a schoolhouse, not as a library. Structural and flow requirements are quite different. It has served as Reading's library for twenty-nine years with limited investment during the conversion, and except for essentially emergency investments, the town has undertaken very little investment in the facility since. The roof leaks, the basement floods and stays damp, that's where all the books are. The gutters, masonry windows are in terrible shape. The HVAC, electrical, and lighting are outdated and inefficient. The elevator is too small and unreliable. There's a lot of dark corners and dead ends. It needs many improvements in access and public safety. Were it built today, it would not comply with many building codes. It's positively ancient when it comes to modern technology and public expectations of computers, laptops, and electrical needs and fast-paced technological changes. It was not designed to be and is not green or environmentally efficient. From a service perspective, the building and its systems are not even serving current needs well, let alone the community's expectations for the future. Building and systems were not designed for and simply cannot accommodate the dramatic growth in traffic, tenant circulation, size of the collection, programs, and overall usage. Circulation has at least doubled in the time that it's been in this building, and intra-library loans within a large regional network have gone from a few hundred books annually to thousands per month, again, all through the same unchanged building, where the staff struggling to process this volume and cramped poorly arranged spaces. In addition to traditional expectations, demand has grown with new forms of information, including computers, eBooks, and web content, which is served by an informative website serving as an information portal for the community, with twenty-five to thirty thousand hits per month. As illustrated by my earlier sampling of programs and services, nearly none of which existed when the library began its occupancy, Reading residents expect more from their library. They use it more and in more ways. This isn't expected to change anytime soon. The same Pew Research report suggested that at least seventy-three percent of the respondents still visit libraries to browse the stacks and borrow print books. The public spaces, whether meeting rooms are heirs for reading, computer access, or tutoring are oversubscribed, are crowded and poorly positioned. So, fixing the bricks, windows, and roof, while critical, does not address any of this. Always bear in mind that our extraordinary library staff mask many of the issues by laboring behind the scenes to keep the trains running. By their constant efforts, the Reading Library experience, despite all the deficiencies of the current building, is deceivingly smooth. They may make this work for a while without technology, cramped workspaces, and out-of-date systems, but that's really not the way we should be doing it or what they can maintain. The library trustees, staff, friends, foundation, and regular patrons are not alone in recognizing the building's urgency. As we began to seriously contemplate building issues ourselves, beginning in two thousand and seven, the Board of Selectmen repeatedly asked us what our plan was for addressing the building and looking at options. In parallel with the library's detailed assessment of the building and options between two thousand and eight, two thousand and twelve, the Board of Selectmen commissioned the Municipal Building Committee in two thousand and ten to evaluate all of the town's buildings and issue prioritization recommendations. In its two thousand and eleven report, this committee listed the library building as the town's most critical building. But this library, any library, is more than just a building. The building is only a tool or vehicle to let people get what they want out of it. It's how you use a library that would guide how the library building is designed. So, in two thousand and seven, as we developed our new five-year plan and mindful of some of the imminent actions on the building, we took pains to thoroughly assess what the community was using library for and what its expectations were for the future. It is clear that what the community expects from the library today is different than it was only a few years ago, not to mention thirty years ago. So, we have a failing building with a consensus that something major must be done urgently, and a clear recognition of changing community library expectations. And along comes a serendipitous and unique opportunity to get financial assistance from the state. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts is again offering substantial construction funding for qualified library projects. These arise and get funded only occasionally. After several years of diligent application and waiting, Reading has secured an award of five point one million dollars in support of this specific project. I am hopeful that everyone present is generally aware of the process that we have undergone to enable this award. Timeline details are provided in the materials that we're circulating tonight. As a reminder, I provided summaries at the April two thousand and ten Town Meeting, at which you approved funding for the program development, a feasibility study, a preliminary design, and preparation of the state application, and then at the November two thousand and ten Town Meeting, at which you authorized us to proceed with the application containing the design included in tonight's proposal. I presented to you at the November two thousand and twelve Town Meeting a further summary and the good news that only weeks before, funding had been secured from the state for our proposed project. Since that time, we have reviewed and updated all of the estimated project costs. Each appearance at Town Meeting was preceded by presentations and tacit endorsement by the Board of Selectmen and other public forums. So, we can answer any questions you may have about the state program or the award, but I would like to make two important points on that now. The first is that the state program requires any community to approve local funding for the approved project relatively quickly. In Reading's case, we have until June thirty, two thousand and thirteen. This is the reason for the proposal to put the debt exclusion question in April, because we don't want to miss out on this, in our view. The second point is that the state program required very specific elements in an eligible application, which we have met, such as proper sizing to match the town's particular demographics and meaningful investments to accommodate future needs. Except for minor changes in space and details, the current award is dependent on the execution of the approved design. At least thirty communities applied, of which twenty-two received awards in ranked priority. Reading was ranked ninth, but only about the top ten have been funded to date, including Reading. If we choose to forego this particular opportunity, we will not be eligible for state assistance under this program in our relevant timeframe. We'll go to the bottom of the list, and obviously, there's eighty to a hundred million dollars of projects in front again. We arrived at the proposal before you in our fifth year of methodical planning and evaluation. Although the timeline and process details are in your materials, I wanted to highlight a few points to allay any concerns about the rigor and preparation of this project proposal. As noted, the three catalysts were the building needs, the community needs, and the state program opportunity. The process is the story of these three themes interweaving and overlapping. So, I've talked, as I said, about the community gathering of information and projections about what the community wants, and we've tried to involve the community at each step of the way here. In two thousand and eight, we began the formal building assessment process, commissioning a professional assessment. Throughout two thousand and nine, with help from architects, the trustees evaluated various options for the building with preliminary cost estimates of each. These include do nothing, major maintenance, a basic renovation, a major renovation of the existing building, a major renovation in addition, and a new building. Each of these was thoroughly evaluated with costs, to the extent we had the summary costs, and qualitative pros and cons. For example, a new building was the most expensive, presented difficulties for the site location, and failed to use the current facility, a strong theme in community feedback. We narrowed to three options with a recommendation that became the current project. The reasoning and conclusions of this election were vetted frequently with Selectmen at, our, and their meetings, with no objections. The advent of the state program in the middle of our own process crystallized the renovation in addition opportunity. In response, a community library improvement committee was formed to develop a proposal to Town Meeting to enable Reading to make the application. The committee comprised a range of interested community participants, reps from the library, of course, trustees and friends, town facilities, town management, the historical commission, library staff, high school students, and unaffiliated citizens. With permission from Town Meeting, we engaged consultant to develop a building program, articulating in great detail the community needs into a design. We engaged a project manager to oversee the process of retaining an architect and navigating the state application process, and to develop detailed cost estimates, and architects to assess feasibility, focus on design proposal, and generate a detailed cost estimate for the construction elements. In addition to the regular updates to Town Meeting, Selectmen, and FinCom, we have also held many public forums for input at all stages of the project. Let me note that these professionals and town representatives strove to keep us honest and always challenged any expansion unless truly justified and compelling against the most efficient and modern use of space. The program representing Reading's library needs was applied by architects into the design that you see displayed on the boards. The result was an elegant and efficient solution that formed our state application and tonight's proposal. To date, we have not spent additional time or town resources. To date, we have not spent additional time or town resources exploring the other options in comparable detail, given that the choice is to pursue the state-assisted one at the moment. The proposal is a renovation of the historic building and a small addition of 7,500 square feet. For design details, I would refer you again to the written materials and welcome your questions later this evening. The proposed design delivers excellent value to the town of Redding. Not only does it fix all of the infirmities of the existing building, it allows us to redesign the usage of the building and the site to accommodate the current and future needs of Redding. By intention, this is a design projected to accommodate needs for at least two generations to come. However, there's no extravagance built into the design. As noted, it corresponds to the needs and wishes of the community and clearly meets the guidelines of the state library office, but is tightly designed to be cost-effective. This solution also satisfies very clear preferences from the community to stay in the current location and building. It is a town treasure that connects generations and shared memories, and it preserves a historic original landmark designed by an important Redding architect. It includes the following building and site benefits, and I think these are laid out in your materials. It fixes all the building envelope issues permanently, updates the building to all health, safety, and accessibility codes and best practices, adds seven additional parking spaces, improves vehicle and pedestrian flow, modernize the building to current standards, including electrical, technical, technological. But the heart of this project, however, is the redesign of the interior spaces. You might not even notice what's inside, but that's what's important, of course, enabling natural use of the existing building while greatly amplifying the use and services within. This design optimizes usage of space for materials, patron flow, and usage in public meetings. I have a long list of space redesigns, but I'm going to skip that in the interest of time, which I'm sure you'll be excited about. But I think some of that is in the materials. Services and general usability will also be streamlined and enhanced. Self-checkout if desired, flexibility, better lighting, easier access to the building, better display space, bright area for the large print collection, which helps seniors and others, a well-designed computer classroom, open computer areas. These are things that people attempt to do now, they just can't. They're just hanging out all over the place. Better staff space, putting together the homebound deliveries, processing interlibrary traffic. And of course, the resulting building will be environmentally responsible, operate sustainably, and be LEED certified. So what will this cost? And I think you've seen some of the information. The total project cost is estimated at $14.9 million, composed of building renovation and construction costs, and project costs such as for fees, moving, and temporary space. I refer you to the written materials for the component detail. If we fund this project, the state will reimburse $5.1 million, yielding a net town contribution of up to $9.8 million. I note also that the project estimate includes well over $2 million in design and construction contingency amounts, a level recommended by facilities, construction, and architect advisors at this stage of the project. The cost estimates were originally developed in considerable detail during the preparation for the state application by our team of professional advisors in 2010. After the state announced its ability to fund the Redding project at the end of October 2012, these numbers were quickly and thoroughly updated by a comprehensive team of town management, facilities, professional advisors, and knowledgeable citizen volunteers. This included adjustments for the changed economic circumstances in the last two years, but no meaningful adjustments were made to the scope of the project. We are now collectively very confident in the integrity of the cost estimates, particularly given the robust contingencies. We're also hopeful that private and corporate fundraising may offset some of the project costs. However, in keeping with the town's prudent and conservative fiscal management, we are asking for what we believe to be the maximum possible amount to be paid to avoid any mid-project surprises. We know that Redding continues to face challenging choices in the use of its finite capital dollars. It seems clear by various objective measures, however, that the library is a top priority of the community and overdue for capital attention of some kind. This state-assisted project is a unique opportunity for Redding to leverage its investment into a complete, permanent, long-term solution. The space and services the library provides benefits all of Redding citizens, especially those with limited means. If we do not pursue the state-assisted project, we will still need to invest heavily into the existing building, but we will achieve virtually none of the service and site improvements. We will simply have a refurbished, outdated library. As tempting as it is to consider incremental fixes, we do not believe this would be money well spent. Last page. Speaking not only as a library representative, but as a taxpayer, parent, and property owner, I believe the recommended project is the clear and prudent choice and priority for Redding. Finally, as you consider this particular project, please remember that the project before you tonight has been unanimously endorsed by your Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Library Board of Trustees, and Town Management. It has been specifically approved by the Redding Historical Commission and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and of course, the many dedicated members of the Friends of the library and the Library Foundation are in complete support, as are, I hope, all, or at least the vast majority, of you and the residents of Redding. So I ask that you join us in endorsing this project to give Redding the library it needs, wants, and deserves. Thank you.
FinCom report, Mr. Greenfield.
Like John, I'm a week ahead of John. I'm halfway through my eye surgery, so bear with me while I work with one eye on this. Town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, thank you for this opportunity to present Finance Committee's recommendations. On January 22, 2013, the Finance Committee voted 8-0-0 to support the article based on the financial information provided and estimated project cost of $14.9 million. After netting the state award $5.1 million, the net cost to the town would be $9.8 million plus interest cost over an estimated 10-year period. And this project and debt service costs are estimated to cost each homeowner approximately $149 per year for the 10-year period. The Finance Committee fully acknowledges that this has not been an ideal process, and better information should have been provided sooner. We also acknowledge that the very recent award of the state and the need to promptly act within this defined state deadline justified the recent changes and the late availability of data. This is not ideal, but it is nevertheless a decision that's simply before us. This Article VI decision has a few key elements to consider, the first of which is to put the Article VI into context of other financial decisions and town priorities on the horizon, which were presented today substantially. These were discussed at town meeting in November as well, and the Finance Committee has asked that they be reminded here, which we appreciate that being available. It's important that members understand the magnitude, the timing, the options of each. You know, some can be deferred, some can be declined, some can be incrementally addressed, and one can be staged to take advantage of state funding. These are both financial and value decisions for the town meeting members and potentially voters to make. And the projects include, you saw the four projects that are the primary drivers behind future need. If the cost of Article VI was strictly to enhance library services, then this decision would sit equally with the other pending projects, and the town could simply prioritize and potentially vote to avoid these costs. However, the decision here is not whether to incur a cost to improve the library, and is instead which cost will we incur and over what timeframe. Library is an old and stressed building in need of significant investment, even if Article VI were to be rejected by town meeting members and the voters. The town and the library trustees and the ad hoc library committee, in researching options going back to 2009, recommended the best options were to remain at the current location. The imperfect information we've been provided would normally cause the Finance Committee to ask everyone to step back and provide additional engineering and design work, analysis, cost estimates, financial estimates, et cetera. However, the decision also has a ticking clock in the form of state award of $5.1 million that expires in June 2013, if not accepted by the town of Redding. If we do not accept the state award, there's a very good likelihood that it will not be available again. In addition, the reason the Finance Committee did not ask for this decision to be deferred until April is because there was a clear sense that this information would not materially change between now and then. And there would have been a further cost to the town to get at that additional information. The size of the award is what changes the dynamics of this financial decision. When you already know you need to spend significant town funds on the library, and someone offers you $5.1 million towards that effort simply by agreeing to enhance the library further, it becomes an easier financial decision to make. The Finance Committee also wants to acknowledge that we are not 100% confident with a cost estimate of $14.6 million to rehabilitate the existing building should Article VI fail. The figure contains both construction rehabilitation enhancements, which if scrutinized and prioritized, could be scaled back. However, even if we were to cut the cost roughly in half to $7.5 million, only to fix the worst building issues and were to defer other enhancements, the cost of Redding still begins to approach the $9.8 million cost proposed in Article VI. Approving Article VI is viewed as the optimal long-term financial decision and would also be a strong value statement for Redding. It is understood that this will be an added cost to homeowners, but it's also expected that, like other similar projects, an investment like this will return to homeowners in the form of incremental real estate values. Another important factor in this decision is that current operating budget under Proposition Two and a Half is already straining Redding's budget. Redding has been exemplary in doing everything possible over the past five years to optimize the use of funds for essential services. There is no room in the operating budget to fix the library's current problems within the existing tax base without eliminating other essential services. We see a similar challenge with the insufficient funds available for needed road improvements with the existing budget. A no vote on Article VI, which is a decision to decline the state award, would shift the full cost to Redding taxpayers and either crowd out other essential services or result in a return to town meeting to ask for a debt exclusion. Another factor on the horizon, should you reject this article and defer the improvements, are the looming federal budget cuts, their future impact, and their future impact on state, cities, and towns. We should anticipate that added financial challenges will reach Redding in the future as a result of this, making it important to take advantage of this award before us. Acting promptly would also allow us to take advantage of the current low-interest rate environment. As with all projects of this magnitude and complexity, the Finance Committee certainly supports assembling a strong building committee to oversee the effectiveness, effective use of taxpayer dollars. Despite imperfect information being available and despite the late arrival of information, the Finance Committee, focusing on the material elements of this decision, voted to recommend and take advantage of the state award and to invest, at this time, in an important town asset. Thank you.
Mr. Tackenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members. I just wanted to speak very briefly on the process going forward from here and also talk about a library building committee. The process is, the town meeting will debate this and make a decision tonight. This requires a two-thirds vote. If it's approved by the town meeting, then it goes on the ballot for the April 2 town election. So that's a little bit more than 60 days away. If that's approved, then we go through a longer-term process to get this building constructed. The chairman of the library board indicated that there was a 14-member library committee that worked with the library board of trustees and staff and professional staff to get us to where we are now. That committee has dissolved. Its time has expired, and what I would recommend to the Board of Selectmen and the Library Board of Trustees is to establish a new library building committee to basically carry out the project. The planning work has been done to date. Now we need to get the expertise that we need in order to carry out this project. So what I expect to do is present to the Board of Selectmen and the Library Board of Trustees sometime in the month of February, a proposal for jointly establishing a library building committee. I am suggesting that the library building committee report to the facilities director, who will be the project manager for this building. And that's particularly important because our facilities director has a great deal of expertise in building projects like this, and that expertise will certainly be very important. The facilities director will report to the town manager on this project, as the town manager is a contracting authority for the town. What I'm proposing actually is a 10-member library building committee to consist of two members of the library trustees, two members of staff, a member of the historical commission, two members of town meeting, a member of the Finance Committee, and two residents of the community who have specific expertise in the area of building construction, perhaps architects, or engineers, or construction managers, and the like. The first task that they would have, hopefully, will be to assist in hiring an owner's project manager and an architect, and then going from there, basically, review and make recommendations on the bidding and all aspects of the project as it goes forward to, hopefully, a very successful completion. The timeframe on the project that we anticipate is, hopefully, by this time next year, to have a bid actually awarded and to be into construction soon after that, and we're talking about approximately 18-month construction period. During that time, we would obviously have to move the library out of this facility and find additional space for them somewhere in the community, probably not to provide all functions that they provide right now and probably in a much smaller space, but to keep them viable and manageable for that 18 months of construction and then to move back into a brand-new facility. Thank you.
Further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown, Precinct Eight. Mr. Moderator, when this motion is moved, I'd like to move for a standing count, if that's possible. Thank you. We're adding perhaps $500 to $600 a year to the average household. That's a lot of money. I'd like to thank Bob and Mary for their input on this. I would do one little side note, and if I might, Mary gave us a figure of $924,000 for the replacement windows at the Killam School. The town of Wilmington just recently had a bid up there. The original estimate was $804,000. It's now gone up to $1.48 million, so a 65% increase, and I'm sure that we can do that. That'll happen in this project. And I'd like, as a side note to this, this is not a new problem to the town of Redding. The 1914 town report said something has to be done. Fortunately, the Carnegie Foundation came along and paid for the whole thing, so if anybody knows the Carnegie Foundation still can get out money, I'll vote for it.
Mr. Brown, just to let you know, it will be a standing count. Further discussion. Yes, Ms. Anthony.
Camille Anthony, Precinct Five. Statement and then ask...
You're cutting in and out. He's coming right behind you with a new microphone.
Supposedly, tonight, what we're going to do is vote on whether this should go to the voters, so that's my statement. My second statement is, sitting here, I'm just concerned with the statement by the FinCom chair that there is imperfect information, and I just don't think that's something that we want to be sending out to the voters. So I guess I feel that I need to know, what's this imperfect information, and is it a problem? All we know is it was imperfect, but you decided to go along with it because the state was going to be reimbursing us, and we have to get it done. But I think we need to be assured that we know what we're... But I think we need to be assured that we know what we're doing.
Mr. Greenfield.
The, the comment about imperfect information is that there was a, there was a good amount of, going back to 2009, there was a good amount of analysis that was done of different As that leap forward to the Finance Committee just recently, the two Finance Committees, all of that information was not updated, re-verified with engineers, packaged so that all the options were, had their financial cost presented to where you had a really solid financial analysis on each one. Information was provided on each of those. And I think the reason that Finance Committee got comfortable with it, because if you look at, despite the information not being solid, if you look at, if you look at the dynamics of building a new school versus rehabbing and some of the others, you can, you can project roughly what they would be as part of your own decision. Building a new school is costly. Building, rehabbing an entire building is costly. Building it in the same place is a value decision in a historic building. We, we won't comment on the value decision, but clearly one is being made there. So there was enough information, let me, let me change that. Had $5 million not been thrown into the mix and we were deciding on that, at that, and there was no deadline, at that point, we would have clearly pushed this back for greater detail to be provided in order to, in order to have a little more black-and-white decision. But even with the information being imperfect, we have a decision for us, before us, that has, that has a limited timeframe to make that decision. That, that factor of, of the timeframe and the magnitude of it throws this into a different category. It's much easier to look at, it's much easier to look at something when a third of it is going to be paid for by someone else versus you. So those numbers could be way off and that $5 million being added to it, in our view, still makes it the logical, long-term decision, even with imperfect information. And I know that's difficult to get comfortable with, but we could analyze all the smaller details and get them all firmed up and FinCom didn't think that was going to materially change the picture. Not the perfect answer. I don't have the perfect information either. Some of the others might have that. But the reality is, when you look at the big elements of this decision, it's, it's simply, there, there are material costs. We could choose not to address those material costs and the, and the library would simply continue to have problems and the library would have difficulty moving into the future and achieving all of what it can be. That's obviously clearly a choice, but if, if we are going to address the building's problems, what a perfect time to do it, when somebody comes along and offers you $5 million and you can put the two together and come out with a library. I think now if somebody goes to sell real estate, they say, "We have a library. It's a very nice library." I think after this project, it'll be, you gotta go see the library. It's one of the, it's one of the nicest in the, in the state and it, it in fact would help to return the very funds that people are being asked to pay for. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to stand up here and say I was 100% comfortable, but I can tell you that the big elements of this decision, I got comfortable enough, given the timeline that we have to make this decision, that it was the right decision.
Mr. Mandell.
Bob Mandell, Precinct Six. I've just got a couple of quick questions here. The projection per household on the $400,000 home was $150 per year and that would be over 10 years? Okay. The second question, the $5.1 million in the state grant, that's actually sitting in a fund ready to be released?
Mr. LaLecher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, but they're good for it.
Okay.
The, the way it works.
Are you sure?
No. If you think back to the way the high school project works.
Right.
Redding had to approve the full amount of the project. They had to start building the project and paying the full amount of the project or some portion. And then the state came along later and eventually reimbursed the town. The MSBA changed the model to save their own interest costs of paying as they went. But in this particular case, it's somewhat of a hybrid, but it's more like the old-fashioned style where construction will be finished two to three years before the state will finish paying. So the average taxpayer, they say $150, but in the early couple of years, it's going to be higher and then in the last seven or eight years, it'll be lower. But this is, as, as much as anything can be guaranteed, it's money that the state has set aside.
They've set aside.
And it's money that's going to the libraries.
Another quick question. Let's say we went out to bond this. Would we bond the full amount immediately? How would you structure something like that?
That's, that's a very complicated question.
How about a short answer?
Yeah. If, if I had to do it right now, I would probably permanently finance $10 million, not $10 million, $10 million and then use this town share of that, so maybe that's $7 million. Because there's at least $2 million in contingency and as unlikely as it may seem, it may not be used. So you certainly wouldn't want to finance the whole amount. But we'll have to finance some temporary amount that the state will pay us back, but we don't want to borrow that for 10 years. We'll just borrow that for short term. So the, the long answer is I'd probably borrow about $7 million permanently right out of the gate, knowing that that's going to be needed, and then do all short-term financing in this, until the state has paid us back.
Now, on the current rates, what kind of current rates can you get us?
Right now, in the long piece, we'd get about 2%, maybe a little bit less.
2%.
And on the short stuff, it would barely be noticeable.
And that's probably, probably as favorable as we've had in years?
Yeah. It's, it's not quite as good as it was last spring, but it's very close. Certainly historically, it's still great. And, and the amount of interest in a project can be a huge difference. You know, back on the revenue side, we used to be earning $1 million a year and now we're down to $100,000. It's the opposite as a debt service payer. So the interest rates are great.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Van Magnus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fred Van Magnus, Precinct Eight. I think part of the decision that we have for town meeting tonight, while we're here to try and vote yes or no on the library project, I think we, as responsible members of this town, we really need to step back and think about what the most important priorities are for this town. Because we are really, or should be really, priority-driven in the decision-making process that we go forward. Now, every one of us, the hundred and how many are here, probably have our own priorities in terms of where we think we should be putting the limited amount of funds that we have. I will tell you, in, in listening to the presentation that Mr. LaLecher and Mr. Lee put forward, I try and think about what our, what I hope to think is maybe the community priorities. And the first place that I land are the schools, because there's nothing more fundamental than the education of our children to ensure the future. And I think I know that we're going to have to spend a very substantial amount of money to deal with the elementary, I call it pre-grade one, it's probably another name for it, the early childhood education aspect of it. But we heard that that could be a $6 to $10 million bill and maybe more, maybe less, depending on the options. But that's a very substantial amount of money and we really owe it to those children to, to get that right education to start. I then think of Killam. Been in Killam, a lot of you have been in Killam. Those children need to have that school upgraded. We've done the other elementary schools. We haven't fixed Killam. That is a priority in this community. I don't look at downtown Phase Two as a, as a priority. Some may, I don't. I certainly look at the water situation because we committed as a community to buy from MWRA. We now have some very structurally important things that we have to do. And some of the things, when you, when you start to put the priorities out there and think about the priorities, I have trouble putting the library as an important priority to spend $10 million upfront ahead of all of those projects. Now, that's a personal decision on my part. You'll all have your own choices of how you want to make that decision. The other thing that you need to think about, though, as you deliberate this, is what the costs are to the, to the homeowners out there that have that $400,000 house. And a lot of those people are seniors that are living on relatively fixed incomes. I think at the Board of Selectmen meeting last week, there was a number of, was it 17 or 20% of the community is over 65 or retired? And I start to look at what the impact could be of these projects on them and then add every single year 2.5% to that tax bill. Because every year, that $400,000 house, whether we like it or not, is going up 2.5% to fund salary escalation and benefits and all the other things in town. So you start to get the numbers that are in the $800 to $1,000 impact over the 10-year life cycle of this project on a $400,000 home that might be paying $4,000 today in taxes. So these decisions that you make are very important and you can't make this library decision in a vacuum because the elementary schools, the Killam, the water projects are going to be here and they're going to have to be decided and they're not going to fit into the, to the nice little pockets in the budget. So I, I asked town meeting, as you, as you deliberate on this, that you bring into the picture and you decide tonight how that library project fits and where you want to place it in your priority list. Because once you commit this and it goes to the voters, well, they'll have a chance at it, but maybe only 9 or 10% of the electrical come out and vote at the April election and they're going to vote for the rest of the town. One last thing that we also talk about is a big liability, don't forget, is other post-employment benefits, which we heard last year, is a $93 million bill for this town and we've put $500,000 aside. So there's some substantial financial issues for this town and this town meeting has to grapple with that in terms of the priorities. And I sat at the, in the last two FinCom meetings and I know they voted their heart, but I did not see them vote and go through all of the details. They did not look at the life cycle cost of this project. They didn't look, we've never heard about what's going to happen with the library staff when only one-third of the library moves for two years. There was mistakes in the original numbers. There was a $250,000 system that was left out. In, in the last week, we found out $160,000 of a roof was never included in the estimate and these numbers have been allegedly gone over time and time and time again by consultants and everybody else. We also heard that the cost, and I'm going to finish, Mr. Moderator, I probably am cutting up on the 10 minutes. But we also heard that the cost to renovate the existing facility without adding on was close to the cost, the town share of the cost of getting this free state money. But don't forget, that free, that building that we get in the state money costs an addition of over $2.5 million. So it is going to be priorities in terms of what, if you don't vote this, what you're going to spend and how you're going to spend it for the repair of delayed maintenance in the library. And those will all take priorities. They may not be $6 million, they may be $3 million, they may be spread out over some period of time. But those are the decisions that this town meeting is going to have to evaluate, not just a single project. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for your time.
Mr. Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Barry Berman, Finance Committee in Precinct Four. I'm going to try to divide my comments, some from, as a FinCom person and then as a, as a voter and a town meeting person. I, I wanted to address Camille's question, here's my FinCom hat on for a second, about the discussion within the Finance Committee about having imperfect information. I think part of what we discussed is that in a very short period of time, we got information and it, like everyone else saw, that the costs had gone up a considerable amount. And so for us, I think a little bit of the frustration was is that, you know, we got this and we had to kind of render a very, very fast decision. But part of, of what it was is that if we really think about it, the information that initially was presented at town meeting about the cost of this project was from data that was done in 2010 when the library put in the initial grant with the state. And up until October 28th, there was no library project really for, for to discuss. But until the state granted Redding, you know, winning the grant, we were going to have a discussion about the library and it was going to be about how much money we're going to spend to fix it up and possibly maintain it, but it wasn't going to be about this specific project. So really, the trustees in a very short period of time had to redo the data that they did in 2010 and, you know, that with construction costs going up, et cetera, it became a different project. So we, when we talked about having imperfect information, it was the fact that it was done in a very, very quick way. So we really kind of delayed the first vote, asked the library to go back and just say, "Take a look at what you did" and really kind of just, you know, sharpen the pencil a little bit so we can get some accurate numbers. But always within FinCom, there was general support to do it. And for a couple of things that even that David touched on, if, if we decide as a community, not, or you as a town meeting, not to vote tonight on Article VI and then the, and then the voters, voters don't get it, the cost of doing nothing is not going to be zero. Already, just to put a Band-Aid on the library is going to be close to $2 million. And you saw the slides, the electrical, the roof, the windows, the flooding. Just to kind of put the Band-Aid on, we're looking at a couple of million dollars. And then doing renovations to do the floor plans, using, moving the stacks, we're looking at, you know, anywhere from $7, $8, $9 million, or I think $5 to $7 million. So even if that number can be, let's say, cut in half or just say, "You know what? That's really an overestimate. We can do maybe a little bit less for a little bit less." We're now quickly approaching what it's going to cost to do the town share of the library anyway and then in fact now we get the, you know, the, the impact of basically what it amounts to a brand-new library. So the part about taking the state grant is important because at some point, we're going to spend $9 million on this building. It may not be all at once, but it's going to be maybe a couple of million dollars upfront and then it's going to be another million or $2 million every year and that's going to be all on the town of Redding. That's not going to be any help from the state. So really, from a financial point of view, financial situation, it really became quickly apparent that we're going to spend that money anyway. Let's get, let's get the state grant, enhance the services and really, you know, do, if you looked at the, the boards outside and the slides here, about having what an amazing new building, because if we just do it within the current envelope, even if we do the rehab, it's really going to be the same library. It's just going to, it's just going to be new, you know, a little bit more modern, but it's not going to be the kind of library that we can get and we're going to spend almost the same amount of money. So that's kind of, I wanted to clarify, Camille, your point about sort of, you know, the imperfect information and our hesitancy, but then when we got the additional information, it became clear that from a financial impact alone, forget about what you think about libraries, this was a project that really deserved positive consideration. Now I'm going to kind of take my FinCom hat off and I'm going to put my Town Four Precinct hat on. In my day job, I, a lot of you know, I'm in, I'm a lender and I've worked with a lot of people. I've done relocation for, for relocating executives and I was told, there's a story of a, as a fellow that I met who was a CFO of a company that you all know of. And I was helping him relocate his family. And this is, he was probably moving his family probably for the 12th or 13th time in a 30-year career. He goes and he fixes companies and he does it. And I had a conversation, I said, "So when you decide to move to Boston, like, how do you decide what town you're going to live in?" And he says, "Well, like I do everything, like what everybody else does." I had my staff assemble data on. I had my staff assemble data on data, data on schools and on resale values and things like that, and then I do my own due diligence. I take the four or five towns that my staff kind of says is a good place to live, and then I take a drive and I go visit each one of those towns' libraries." And I spend an hour or two in each of those libraries, because in that hour or two, I can learn more about a community and what it values and what kind of a town it is just by spending an hour in the library. And so this is a CFO of a company, pretty smart guy, and that kind of stuck with me about how we, how we, as a community, value the library and what our values are. You know, at a time, if you recall, at a time when during really tight budget constraints, we decided to increase the library hours to Sunday, right? Why? Because the community needed it and it became a value. At a time of tight budgets, we always add additional money to the library so that we can continue accreditation. A lot of towns, to our northeast, south, and west of us, when it comes time for cutting the budget, the first thing they do is they look to the library. And a lot of those towns have lost their state accreditation. We, in tight times, have always done that. So I think, as a community, we imbue the values of the CEO of a large corporation and kind of think about our town in the same way. So I want to kind of leave you with that. Another thought is, you know, we're talking about the state grant. You know, the state grant's $5 million. And I don't personally, I don't look at this as the state is giving us money to do the library. I look at it as that we're getting our money back. Reading is a net exporter of taxes to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And what do I mean by that? We all pay our taxes, pay our business taxes, we pay our income taxes, and then we give it to the state, and then we get that back in the form of local aid, Chapter 70, road money, and from time to time, a project like this. A town like Reading, we pay more than we get back. So I don't look at this as a gift from the state, as much as it is we're getting our money back to do a project that we feel has a lot of value. So again, I think that, you know, from that perspective, as well as just from a strictly financial perspective, we're going to spend money on this library, you know, one way or another, whether it's done in a kind of, you know, coherent way that increases the, increases the, you know, the footprint and the, and just the whole way the library works, or we're going to do it piecemeal by piecemeal, project by project, you know, not in a thoughtful way, to the point where, and then that money is going to come from other projects, because it's not going to be budgeted, it's not going to be planned, we're going to have to do it in some way, and it's going to take away from another project. So for all those reasons, I really do consider, you know, I ask you to support this from a financial perspective and also as a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Ensminger, Precinct Seven. I just want to follow up on the imperfect information comment, which does concern me. The needs are acknowledged. I think there's not a person in this room that does not acknowledge that this building needs work. Good news came to us in the fall. Teams were assembled, numbers were pulled together quickly. And the reason they had to be pulled together quickly was because this town meeting had to be held now in order to position this to go on the then-only election in sight, which would have been the April 2 election. We just received the news today, and I think, Alan, you made the announcement earlier, that there are going to be two other elections in Reading before June 30th. The first being the primary for the senatorial election, and I think you said April 30th for that and June 25th for the regular election. Question to the town clerk, would the town be able, under the law, to also have a town ballot at either of those elections?
We can have what's referred to as a dual election. We'd have to have a separate ballot, which also indicates that we'd have to have separate staffing. So there would be two elections happening at the same time.
But there will be some saving of an overall standalone election?
There'll be some, but it's still going to pretty much be the cost of two elections.
So we can buy some time here, if there is some refinement needed. And Peter did speak to the importance of putting together a multifaceted building committee, which I don't think has been in place for some period of time. That committee could work for the next couple of months, refine this estimate, take out all the uncertainties as we can, and cost out the alternatives better, because many of us want to hear what was left on the cutting room floor, what was discarded in 2008, 2010 to get to this decision tonight. I'm disappointed I didn't hear more about that tonight, frankly. So I would like the body to consider deferring action on this, either through a no vote or otherwise, and letting that committee do its work. And that'll keep us online to get the state aid and we'll get better information. Thank you.
Mr. Hackenbacher?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. We can get you virtually any information you want, but there is a cost associated with it. A building committee, even as I've proposed it, is not going to be able to come up with those numbers. We're going to have to hire an architect, and the architect is going to have to go back and look, as they've looked at the preferred project, they're going to have to go back and design a project, for example, that fits exactly within the existing footprint and cost that out in detail. And they're going to have to go back, if you want to look at a new construction, you're going to have to find a site and figure out what the site cost, the cost of site construction, and what the design of a building at that location would be. So there will be a cost associated with getting additional information. What we did, at the Finance Committee's request, is we got them order-of-magnitude costs, and that's the basis upon which the Finance Committee has made their recommendation. The order-of-magnitude costs are the costs that you've seen, which is if you take the existing building and you just do some basic work on the building, the roof and the windows and pointing and so forth, it's a couple of million dollars. You may or may not be able to do that because you might trigger a code issue where you actually have to do a bigger project because you've hit a threshold, as we did at Killam School, and couldn't do the windows because that would have tripped us over a threshold. And the project cost of, estimated cost of about $9.6 million, all-town money, is based on order-of-magnitude, taking the existing building and basically gutting it, renovating it, and doing the best you can in making it the most effective and efficient building you can, but within the existing footprint, without the addition. And so that's that $9.6 million for that compared to $14.9 million for the project as proposed, but that $14.9 million you take the state grant off of. If we were to do just the existing project, there is no state grant. Excuse me, just the existing building, there is no state grant.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Ensminger?
Maybe I need to restate my point. This committee is going to have people on it, they're presumably going to be volunteers, they're going to have the requisite expertise to do some top-level estimates on other options. Here's one I'd like to see, okay? And I don't think this has been looked at because it wasn't possible in 2008 or 2010. The land on Oakland Road has now been consolidated by this body into one unit. There's an available town parcel, it's not a huge parcel, it's comparable to the current one. New construction per square foot, from everything I've seen, is a fraction of old construction. Does anyone dispute that fact?
We have the architects here who can talk to that.
Is that generally true? It's not? Well, I'm seeing 300-plus for you guys, and the published information I'm seeing is 150 to 200.
Could you use the microphone?
I'm going to suggest, if you're going to have the discussion, this is Peter Byerly from Beacon Associates. Come on up here.
Mr. Byerly?
My name is Peter Byerly. I'm with Beacon Architectural Associates, we're the architects on the project. To answer the question, you have to make sure that you're comparing apples to apples. So you have to make sure that you're comparing construction costs versus project costs. So the $300 that was discussed or bandied about, I believe, may have been a project cost, and the $150 that was talked about would be perhaps a construction cost. What we found is that, in fact, the construction cost for the renovation and new construction project that has been estimated is roughly $260 a square foot, $263 a square foot, and I believe that any new construction cost would be on the order of magnitude, maybe 1.3 times that, but it would not be less.
Further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown. I meant earlier to have a roll call vote, sir, when this comes to the floor. Thank you.
Okay, we will ask, we need 20 people, we will ask at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, on DeDario, Precinct Six. I'm a frequent user of the Reading Public Library, as the librarians know, and I've got to see, I've got to see a bit with my own eyes. And just quickly, just to respond to what Fred said, Fred McManus, Fred, in terms of children, that library is loaded with kids, and, not that our school's on, but the libraries also are an important asset in helping to raise our children. What I love to see there are the preschool kids and the moms who go there in the morning for sort of like a storytime, and it's a wonderful opportunity for those mothers to kind of get out of the house and meet with other mothers. I'm certainly supporting the whole renovation, and I think my main reason is because I think it's a crucial time in our history here as far as libraries concerned. I think if libraries don't change, they're going to go under. If we just do, if we don't do a complete job and we just do the building, and we sort of have the same stacks with a couple of computers in the children's room, a couple of children, a couple of computers, maybe six, eight downstairs in the basement, and a small little computer section upstairs, I think you're going to see the crowd at the library diminish. I think the libraries, if they don't change, they become irrelevant. As our media changes, as it accelerates, and things are happening so quickly digitally, that these libraries change or they're going to become, I don't know what you want to call it, monuments. You might want to visit it once in a while, but it's not going to become a central part of the community. Right now, at this point, our library is sort of a community anchor. I don't know any other place where I see as many people other than Market Basket. It's just, all kinds of things are going on. Now, I'm looking at our, this is a time, we've got the $5 million, we've got to go complete this thing, not just the building, but the whole process, to get the library out of, it's mid-20th century. I think it's a tribute to our librarians that they're able to give us the services they do with what they have. But if we want to leave our kids something, we've done pretty well with the schools, there's certainly more to go, and it'll be ongoing. It's never going to end. I think we know that, that's part of being community. But I think it's time to look to the library. It's not only kids, it's multi, it's intergenerational. We've got seniors there, plenty of seniors there. I see guys, I see, you know, college students downstairs. Some of them aren't even using the computer, they're just trying to get a quiet place to study. Youngsters being tutored. But I can imagine that with the new library, we would have rooms, special rooms for tutoring, small classrooms for maybe ESL, maybe citizenship skills, computer skills. The world is changing, and that library, it's about time, needs to change with it. So I would ask you to support this amendment, support this article, and then go home, tell your friends, get out and vote for it when the time comes. Thank you very much.
Further discussion. Mr. Downing?
Jack Downing from Precinct Seven. I think that this body here knows that the library's been working on this for five years and come up with a very good plan, came up with a great grant. I don't think we, town meeting members, should be weighing the costs and benefits of this project. I mean, we usually do that, that's what we do every spring and every fall with a number of things, but if we don't pass this, then the real people who most deserve the opportunity to evaluate the costs and benefits, those are the voters of Reading, will miss that opportunity this spring. We should open the door, let them vote, let them weigh the costs, let them weigh the benefits of a better library, and let's just get out of the way and pass this thing. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Stephen Crook, Precinct Two. Prior speakers have spoken about schools and about the youth, so I asked my two daughters today, I said, "Can you give me your recollections of the library?" So Meg, who's now 29 and living in Seattle, says, "When I think of my childhood summers, I think of the Reading Library. It was a staple of my childhood, but no more so than the summer during the summer reading program. I remember loving the day we could go to the library, walking into the air conditioning and picking out as many books as I wanted. I could never wait to read them when I got home, so I started in the car. Even though it's probably been 15 years since I was there, I can still see the children's room as it was when I was a child. I remember where my favorite books were, how I progressed progressively moved from different sections as I got older and started reading different books. I remember when I was allowed to go downstairs to the young adult section, and finally, the coveted adult section. I remember Mrs. Fisher and the puppet, was it an otter? I remember asking the librarians for book recommendations and nearly always enjoying the suggestions. I even remember the first time the library got computers and moved to the electronic card catalog. The library was a huge part of my childhood and later adult life before I left Reading. The library and the librarians helped develop my love of reading, and for that I will always be grateful." And then my other daughter, Laura, who's now 24 and living in Chicago, writes, "The Reading Library offered me a haven of peace and learning. As a child, I eagerly participated in the summer, the children's summer reading program every year. When I was in middle school, I would bike down to the library with my friends, where we would spend hours discovering new books, music, and movies in the library's collection. I can trace my love to reading and the role it played in my professional development as a writer directly back to the library. It is truly a treasure." What we're talking about here is continuing this treasure. We can spend about $10 million, fix up the building, not take the $5.1 from the state, spend that out of our own pockets later. Another, what's that, another $50 a year on the household on the tax bills? Or we can take the, take the five from the state and this. I mean, yes, it's imperfect information, but when is the information ever perfect? Police stations, fire stations, water treatment plants, middle schools, high schools, we never have perfect information. I mean, we would like to, but the best information, we work with the best information we have, and particularly, we know we need to work on this. We know we need to rehab the building. We know we need to improve the services in the building, bring it up to the 21st century. And yes, it's going to cost some money, but we can, but we can put this to the voters and let them decide whether they want to spend this money now. Or we can turn it down, lose this opportunity, and then go back to the voters later to spend even more money to do the same thing. I would urge you to pass this tonight, and I would urge the voters of the town of Reading when the election comes to support this as well. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Keefe?
Ron O'Keefe, Precinct One. Peter, at the election, what are you specifically asking the voters to vote on? Are you asking them to vote on an override?
There's a subtle difference between an override and a debt exclusion. What we're asking them to vote on is a debt exclusion, and a debt exclusion means that for the town's share of the debt, ultimately, after all is said and done and this grant comes in, that portion bonded over 10 years, as Bob indicated, that the taxpayers vote to increase their tax bill by that amount until the debt is paid off, so for 10 years. Very similar to the high school, which was a Very similar to the high school, which was a, basically a debt exclusion for 20 years. The people's property taxes went up for that period of time, we still have some time to go on that. When the project is paid for, then that falls off their tax bill. So it's not permanent, it's short term during the period of the debt.
So you're asking homeowners to tax themselves when the federal government is going to be taxing them more, the state, in your property taxes, you're going before the voters and actually asking them to vote in a tax hike?
A temporary tax hike. Temporary being approximately 20 years, excuse me, 10 years.
Okay.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Nordstrand?
Does this go on?
I think it's already on.
It's on. Just for the benefit of one of the previous speakers, I am a very senior, senior retired, and I put the public library as number one on my priority list. And the real reason I got up to speak was, a very strong reason, and maybe the strongest reason, to vote for this, for us to vote for this, is to give the people, all the people who are going to have to pay the $150 a year for 10 years, an opportunity to vote yes or no, and get their vote in. And whether it's 5% or 10% or 15% or 20%, bless them. The people who have got the interest to vote are going to vote, and they're going to vote intelligently, and they're going to make a good decision.
Further discussion? Yes, on the aisle? Yes.
Bill Heck, Precinct 8, and also Chairman of the Reading Public Library Foundation. So, and I am an advocate for this. I wasn't particularly involved in this town for a long time. I worked, my kids went to the library, my grandchildren went to the library, they went to the Reading schools. We have an outstanding school system. We have an extraordinary staff at the library. They are in a remarkably awful building. I worked at an institution for a quarter century, well, more, 40 years, which had some really old buildings. It's on the Charles River, and they're iconic. And let me tell you that maintaining iconic buildings is a damn expensive thing to do. The town has chosen to patch and fix and do as little as it can in order to keep things together. For several years, we have excluded the library from the capital improvements program because we knew we needed a much bigger bite. The question of who uses the library? The library is all of our community center. You go there in the summertime, as Bob Nordstrand and I did this summer, and see a bunch of primary school children who write, who spend their summers writing, because the library offers them an opportunity to do that. You go there in the dead of winter and you find a lot of people, Bob's age and my age, and we're both senior citizens by any definition, because it is a place for the community to gather. You want information, you go there. You want to read the newspaper, you go there. You don't have an internet connection, you go there. We found many people during the times of tough employment coming to the library to use services so that they could find a job. Reading is an extraordinary community. Yes, we have tough priorities. Yes, we don't have perfect information. But let us not let perfection drive out the very good. And we have a very good plan. This is the best plan we could come up with. It was put together a year and a half, two years ago. We didn't spend a lot of time trying to update it because we didn't know whether the state would fund it. The state has chosen to fund it. The state has chosen to have a very tight timeline for this. Yes, I suppose if we all spent a lot more money, we could get more perfect data. But we aren't going to get extraordinarily perfect data. We're going to get slightly better approximations. This is a building project. If we'd been able to build it when we first bid it, construction wasn't going on in the Commonwealth, and we probably could have gotten even lower bids then, but we didn't have state grant money. I urge the town meeting to do two things. One of them is to vote positively for this, and the second one is to go out and campaign like the very Ned with every one of your town citizens to get this voted because it is desperately needed. And you can't do a patch job on a building that age and have anything else than a patched building.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. O'Neill?
John O'Neill, Precinct 4. I don't underestimate the financial side of it at all, especially as I'm coming up to the last few years of my working life, and I'm certainly concerned about having fixed income and rising taxes. However, when I look at values, I see the library as one of the few things that, sure, my children, my four children all went through the schools and took advantage of the library. I have a grandchild, the last couple of years, has been taking advantage of the library. But I take advantage of the library, my wife takes advantage of the library, a neighbor who my wife brings, you know, the books for the blind, you know, that person takes advantage of the library. It's one of the few things that the elders in the community do get, especially for their tax benefits. The schools are vitally important, that's what helps our tax base. No question as far as making it attractive for people to come in. But when we were moving to the community, one of the things the real estate people said to us, "Oh yeah, besides the school, they have an excellent library, you really love it." And a library's always been, like, to me, a friend, a nurturing place, a staff that is so friendly and will go out of their way to accommodate. You don't see that in the public sector all that many places. And again, as different places have closed down, like the Atlantic and the video place, where you bump into people, the only place you really bump into people now, and you see, I'm always surprised by who else I'm discovering and seeing, is the library. It is the hub of the community. And hopefully, and once again, the cost, to me, the convincing thing is that if we don't do this, then the costs are going to be almost as much, you know, and not as well invested. I mean, to me, you're going to get something that's going to be with us for decades, you know, and will be something, as was previously mentioned, will be keeping up with the times. And I would like to think Reading is a sort of community that thinks about all of its people. I'll have to just throw in the plug that I think it's a disgrace what we don't spend on human services. I would like to think that one of the few places left where we actually seem that we value people, the library, that at least we can support that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Russ Graham, Precinct 4. And like Mr. Nordstrand and Mr. Heck, the member of the Reading Library Foundation, I first want to assure you that there are some youthful members of the Reading Library Foundation, although they have not wandered their way to the microphone yet. I obviously support this library, but I want to leave aside, though I could wax eloquently on how wonderful the library is, on responsibility. I have been around a long time because I was on the finance committee when we made the Highland School into a library. Incidentally, we in the finance committee supported it, but we very quickly realized it was a chintzy job, and there was lots of stuff that needed to be done even then. But as a finance committee, we began to work on looking at some of the problems in the facilities of Reading. And we did this during the throes of trying to grapple with the onslaught of Proposition 2 1/2 hitting towns. And so we looked at the fire station and built a new fire station. We looked at a board of public works and built a public works facility. We looked at the town hall, added on to it, took the old library, and made that into something. We had long discussions with people, including the school department, on all of these issues. When these and other projects were done, we then looked to the schools. I had left the finance committee and the board of selectmen by that time, but I did get involved a little bit with that problem. And we spent a lot of time and a dollar or two renovating the schools, building new schools, and bringing this high school. My point is that maintaining our facilities to provide what they exist for is an ongoing problem, has always been thus, and if we intend to continue to be the kind of town we are, will always be an ongoing situation. Whenever any of our facilities reach the point when they are no longer able to provide the function for which they exist, we have a responsibility to address that problem. Under our current economic situation, we cannot do it within the frames of the budget. Thus, we have a responsibility to find a plan that we can present to the voters that makes sense and point out to them, this facility will no longer be able to perform the function for which it exists. That's what I think our role is tonight. If we can look at this as we have and see that in order to do Band-Aid approach to the building is going to cost us almost as much as doing what will in fact make the function of this building what it is supposed to be, we have a responsibility to do that. We have a responsibility to go to the voters and educate them to that and ask for their support. I personally think we will get it. But whether we do or not, we cannot abdicate our responsibility. This building is not performing the functions that it is there to do. Therefore, let's accept that as a problem and let's come up with a solution. We have been given that solution. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Tom O'Rourke, Precinct 2. For me, it comes down to just a few key items. Clearly, after listening tonight, the need is here and now, the time is right, we have the additional funding to support that. The library has universal appeal and universal utilization. We should do it right, we've done it right, as the speaker just said, with all our other buildings, and I think that's what separates Reading from any of the towns surrounding us. And I also strongly endorse moving forward and really putting in front of the voters as they deserve that opportunity. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Herrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Karen Herrick, Precinct 8. I've heard a lot of great comments tonight, and I am, as a Fincall member and a town meeting member, fully in support of this project. And I think it's the best value going for the bunch of projects that we have in front of us. I can't even pay my Verizon bill for 140 bucks a month, so, 140 bucks a year for the value that I get out of the library, it seems a no-brainer. I did want to ask a point of information to you folks, and that is, is there a mechanism today that, as we're thinking about organizations in town, that people that perhaps aren't on fixed budgets want to make a contribution to? Is there a mechanism now for capital contributions for this project going forward? Okay. Okay.
If you're going to talk, you should use the microphone.
Okay, he did say that the Library Foundation would be the appropriate body to make a charitable donation to, and it sounds like you guys could set up a bucket. Okay, great, thanks.
Further discussion? Who, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Perry?
Paula Perry, Precinct 1. I just wanted to make three points. One is that the project presented is the one we get state reimbursement for. No other alternatives do we have state reimbursement for. So just understand, in terms of timing and looking at alternatives, this is the project that we get state reimbursement for. Secondly, I think we all understand that the library is going to cost us some money in the future years, and we have a choice to do it one of two ways. One's a debt exclusion and build a building that will last us, you know, decades to come and get us the programs and the building that we want. And the other one is a reactionary kind of spending that we do, that we've been doing with the library and been trying to delay some of that. And that is reacting to emergencies and putting a big pressure on our operating budget, whether it be, you know, deferring other capital or not being able to get police, fire, teachers in order to make those repairs. So those are the two alternatives, and I think we also understand that they're going to rival each other in terms of total cost. Thirdly, I think it is a matter of priorities, and I, as our responsibility as town meeting members, is to let the citizens of Reading decide what their priorities are. They will be paying these bills, so it's our responsibility to allow the citizens this vote. So I encourage a positive vote. Thank you.
I do notice we have at least one non-town meeting member, but as per our bylaws, we'll take town meeting members first. Is there any, yes, on the edge?
Brian Walsh, Precinct 7. I come to you tonight as a father of three kids who are excellent students and spend a lot of time at the library, are well-known to the librarians. But to me, that's almost irrelevant. I haven't heard one speaker tonight that said that this was not a good investment. The entire discussion has been about whether this is a priority investment. So I defer to the voters, as was suggested by previous town meeting members. It's not our choice to make that priority choice, that's for the voters. So it's for us to put it to the voters. So I'm going to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Phillips?
Linda Phillips, Precinct 7. I'm not really sure about this because, as an owner of a building, as a home that we restored, I know what goes into the time, money, and effort when you lovingly care for a piece of old property and you want to keep it viable for the next 20 or 30 years. And even after we did all that work in the first early years, we're still doing things along the way to keep it the way it was then. So I understand about the library, but it does come down to priorities. And I thank the finance department for giving us the list because as town meeting members, we're spokesmen for the town business to people in our precinct. And I have to be honest, I haven't heard from one person in my precinct that wants me to vote for this. Because since we voted for the Wood End School, the New Wood End School, the Barrows renovation, and the new high school, we've gone to MWRA Water. And my water bill, which used to be a flick of a little check, is now a flick of a big check that takes a little consideration and priorities as to payment. So that has added to my financial, to my financial bottom line. Now, we're going to be, we're paying $147 extra a year for the new high school, and I'm assuming the other school buildings as well. Yes, Mr. Lawless, sure. We have 11 more years to pay for that. So at the time, it didn't seem like a lot of money, $147, but added to our extra water bill, and the water lines need to be redone, that's a $6 million project costing another $90 a year. This all adds up. $147 for that, $150 for the library for a 10-year loan, for the full-day kindergarten program, $30 a year, for Killam, $40 to $50 a year, for the downtown project, $50 to $60 additional a year. additional a year, and the water problem, $90 to $100 a year. It's nearly $600 more. Would I like to do all of these things? I sure would, but I can't do them all on my budget, and I don't think a lot of people in my precinct can afford to do that. Maybe some of you who have good jobs and whose hours haven't been cut, or you're not self-employed, you don't feel the pain of your neighbors, but we do. We have neighbors who feel the pain. And as we're getting older and our older years, and we're still putting children through college, it's a consideration what you're going to spend your extra money on. Some of us drive our cars a little longer than we used to. Town meeting looks to us. Another reminder, the building projects we did, we were assured and we did receive reimbursement for, they all went significantly over budget. 1.5 million here, 2.4 million here. The high school alone went over budget, almost $5 million. And we had to come back to town meeting to ask to be appropriate, to appropriate those additional funds, and that added more to the, more to our personal budget as well because after all, we'd already put $10 million into this school. So what's another $2.5 million more? It all adds up. The numbers are not accurate. They haven't been done. They've spent money on feasibility studies, and that was a couple of years ago. The money and the cost for this is going to go up. So we need to inform ourselves. These handouts are important, but we have to be honest with the people in the town because they're going to buy this project or not buy it based on our honesty and our clear explanation on what it's going to cost in the long run. Thank you.
Further town meeting members? None appearing? We had a question up the back. Yes.
Mr. Moderator. Mrs. DeDario.
Oh, actually, you've spoken already, but I will get back to you. Come on forward.
Bird Almeida, 37 School Street. I live across the street. I have a question. How do you think I feel? I represent one group that I have not heard represented at all today, and that's the neighborhood. And I'll tell you right now, the neighborhood doesn't want it. It's just flat-out doesn't want it. It's a beautiful hill. The hill's gone. Further, I have a question from Mr. Heckenbacher. Is there a, would there be a special permit needed for this project to go forward?
What kind of special permit would you be talking?
In order to start construction, to get a building permit, will they need a special permit? It's just a question.
No, they would, once they get through the whole process, they just need the building permits, plumbing, gas, wiring, and permits.
So there wouldn't be a special permit at all?
No.
Okay. I just had that question. I was just wondering myself. But I just really wanted to let you know that the residents of the neighborhood don't want it. It's a beautiful hill. Our kids play on that hill in the summertime. They sled on that hill in the wintertime. There isn't a park anywhere near School Street or Deering or Mount Vernon. It's a pseudo-park for our children. We don't want it. We like, I love the library. I love the fact that my son, my 16-year-old son, does his homework across the street at the library. I think that's wonderful. He can walk across the street. I've heard people at other, other schools and things in town complaining, oh, there's people parking in front of my, I couldn't care less. People park in front of my house, I couldn't care less. I love the library. I love this library. I don't think we need a bigger library. This library has served us well. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. DeDario?
You know, just listening to Mrs. Phillips, you know, there is a point that there are some of our citizens that would need help, and listening to Karen as well. So one thing I know that I don't need to tell you, but I just feel that, you know, some of us have neighbors, and we know that maybe they're elderly on a fixed income and stuff like that. And I know many of you already do it. I am, I'm sure of that. But maybe we've got to, you know, have our antenna up, and we have to be able to see that these people are okay, so nobody is going to get too hurt with this stuff because certainly there's truth. Our expenses are increasing, and there are a number of people who are feeling the pinch. So maybe we have to come up with a way so that we can care for our citizens, so that we can go forward and not have anybody adversely affected. Thanks so much.
Mr. Crook?
Mr. Moderator, Stephen Crook, Precinct Two. Not sure that you could answer the question. I'm just curious how many people in the neighborhood there purchased their houses before 1896, before a school building was built there, later to become a library. There's a library there. There will continue to be a library there unless we do nothing and let it fall down into a pile of rubble. I would, I would submit that one of the risks in buying next to a library is there might continue to be a library there, though if the neighbors are against it, they certainly have the opportunity to vote against it in the election. But I would recommend we put it to the voters and let them decide. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Keefe?
Ron O'Keefe, Precinct One. When people bought their houses back then, it was a school, not a library. It was a neighborhood school because I went to summer school there when I was in the fifth or sixth grade. My cousins went to school there. It was a school, not a library. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes?
Larry Hayes, Precinct Five. And I'm one of the neighbors of a library, two houses down from Bird. And, now, it was a school when I bought my house, but nobody objects to it being a library. We love having a library there. It's the encroachment into the neighborhood and the destruction of the hill and the play space that we object to.
Further discussion? None appearing? Are we ready for the vote? This requires a two-thirds vote, so I would ask my counters if they could help out. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We had been asked for a roll call vote. Let me explain what a roll call vote is first. The moderator would read each of the 192 names while a town clerk would record yes or no. We need 20 town meeting members to call for a roll call vote. All those in favor of a roll call vote, please stand. Stand. We do not have enough. We will proceed to a standing count, however. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please stand. 32, thank you.
34.
34. 23. 23. 42. All those opposed, please rise. One. One extension. Okay. Mr. Rushworth?
Three.
Three.
Eight.
Eight.
Three.
Three. Vote being 131 in favor, 15 opposed. The motion carries. Business under Article VII, Mr. Goldie. Please refrain from clapping. This is a legislative body.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting. Move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by eminent domain the land easements and rights therein, and all the right, title, and interest in water mains and drainage systems, manholes, pipes, a Burton something thereto located within Old Pearl Street, consisting of two portions of Old Pearl Street?
Mr. TeFoya moves that we dispense with the further reading of the motion. Is there any objection? None appearing. Is there a second? Second. Mr. Heckenbacher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, you've seen the Pearl Street property previously. In fact, town meeting authorized the sale of these portions of Pearl Street, including the right-of-way that's shown in green here. This is Audubon Road and Pearl Street. Since town meeting authorized that, we've authorized, excuse me, we've offered portions of the property for sale and found that the right-of-way of Pearl Street is somewhat problematic because we can't provide clear title to it. What town council has recommended, therefore, is to take Pearl Street by eminent domain, basically taking it from ourselves, but that will clear title then, and then we'll be able to go ahead with the disposition. So what this article does is authorizes the town to take the entirety of Old Pearl Street by eminent domain to clear title to it. And then it authorizes the conveyance of this portion of Old Pearl Street and this lot that the town owns. Town meeting gets previously authorized that to be offered for conveyance. The side of Old Pearl, excuse me, of Audubon Road, we're leaving alone. These two property owners, who would logically be potential purchasers of portion of Pearl, Old Pearl Street, and this lot are not interested at this time, and they depend on this portion of Old Pearl Street for access to their properties. So again, the green areas would be taken by eminent domain to clear the title, and then this area, the old right-of-way, and this lot would then be, the board of selectmen would be authorized to convey them.
FINCOM report, Mr. Doctor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At our January 9, 2013 meeting, the finance committee voted to recommend the subject matter of this article by a vote of 8-0-0.
Here's to further discussion. None appearing? Are we ready for the vote? This requires a two-thirds vote. We will try a hand count first. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, we have a point of order? Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Rick Schaefer, Precinct Five. Could you please tell us how much this is projected to cost?
In terms of the cost of taking it by eminent domain?
Yes.
A few hours of town council time, probably order of magnitude of $500.
Please defer the discussion. Yes, Mr. Van Magnus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fred Van Magnus, Precinct Eight. I can't read the lot, but that, on the right-hand side, Peter, the middle lot, up, that one, right there.
Yes.
By virtue of this, does that make that lot totally non-conforming or have no access at all for the property owners to get into that property?
No. It changes nothing about the lot. It changes nothing about Old Pearl Street, except that it takes it so that it's clear that the title of Old Pearl Street resides in the town of Redding. Right now, because it's an ancient way, and it's been around since 1850 or whatever, that is not clear. There's no intent to do anything in terms of transferring land or anything else, and your motion does not provide for transferring land in this area. It's only on this side.
Okay. I just didn't want to hurt somebody by doing that, that's all.
No, absolutely does not. All right, thank you.
Further discussion? All right, then, we will try again. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. We will try a hand count first. If it's unanimous, I will declare it as such. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. We did, okay, I'm sorry. Then we'll take a hand, a standing count. All those in favor, please rise. 24. 34. 34.
38.
38. 43. All those opposed, please rise.
Zero.
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 One. Vote being 139 in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion carries. Business under Article VIII, Mr. Arena.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept the conveyance of an easement for the construction and maintenance of a bus shelter located at 25 Walkers Brook Drive, which easement is shown in a plan entitled "Access Easement" located at 25 Walkers Brook Drive, Redding, Mass., upon such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the board of selectmen deems to be in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Zamborus.
Good guess, right one. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, just to orientate you, the larger rectangle at the top of that is 25 Walkers Brook Drive, which is basically the Stop &amp; Shop property. The right-hand portion of it is Walkers Brook Drive. The bottom part of the rectangle is New Crossing Road. The area we're talking about is just that small, little shaded area that's about 75 feet before the stoplight at the intersection, and that's enlarged on the bottom. What we're proposing to do in that area is to relocate the bus stop from in front of Bertucci's to in front of Stop &amp; Shop. The reason why we're doing that is what we'd like to do is put up a covered bus shelter, and that's about the widest area we have along the roadway behind the sidewalk to try to fit something in. But we do need an additional five and a half feet, approximately 108 square feet of an area in order to construct this bus stop, and this article will allow the board of selectmen to accept the easement that is going to be given by us through the property owners' dickus and development. That's it.
FINCOM report, Mrs. Borowski.
The finance committee recommends the subject matter of this article by a vote of 8-0-0 at their January 9, 2013 meeting for the consideration of $1.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Downing.
Jack Downing from Precinct Seven. Has this location of the bus stop been vetted by the MBTA as an appropriate location for a bus stop?
We've already asked them, and they're acceptable of this revised location, yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Yes.
Jamie Maun, Precinct Four, also Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. This location is within the riverfront, and both state law and town bylaws restrict development, put conditions on development in the riverfront, and we've enforced that as the law demands for all the developers. We've talked with DPW and feel confident we can come up with a plan that meets the needs for the bus stop, as well as complies with the state wetland regulations and the town bylaw, and we look forward to working with George to get this passed and maintain our riverfront environment and flood and wildlife protection and still provide the needed bus stop.
Further discussion? None appearing? Are we ready for the vote?
a plan that meets the needs for the bus stop, as well as complies with the state wetland regulations in the town bylaw, and we look forward to working with George to get this passed and maintain our riverfront environment and flood and wildlife protection, and still provide a, provide the needed bus stop.
Further discussion. None appearing. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Business under Article 9, Mr. Goldie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Subsection 15, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to abandon a drainage easement and release any right, title, or interest that may be held by the town on a portion of land owned by Jeffrey Hardy and Allison...
Mr. Schubert moves that we dispense with the further reading. Is there any objection? None appearing. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Mr. Zamborus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members. This is another easement, but it's a little bit more, it's a little different than the first one. The plan that's behind me is a plan of original easement that was, that the town obtained in 1990. It's a drainage easement, which highlighted in green, and the reddish color is the house that existed at that time. Subsequent between, subsequent between 1990 and today, I'm not sure exactly what day, the house was expanded. It's, it's actually gone through a couple of sales. The recent sale, right now, the title attorney is concerned that the house is located in the easement, and the title attorney, title attorney for the bank would like that issue rectified before they allow the sale. So what this, what this vote does creates a new easement. The drainage pipe still stays within the easement area, but it allows the house to be outside the easement area. So this, this article, if passed, will authorize the Board to discontinue the existing easement and accept the new easement, so that the house, house sale can continue.
Further discussion. None appearing. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor, oh, this, excuse me, requires a two-thirds vote, so again, we'll try a hand count first. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? I do not see any no votes. The motion carries unanimously. Business under Article 10, Mr. Goldie.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting. Steve Goldie, Precinct 4, Town Meeting member, also Chairman, Board of the Selectmen. First, I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 10.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Goldie.
Thank you. And let me give a, a brief history of this very quickly, very quickly. The, on September 15, 2010, there was a financial forum that was held, I believe, at the police station. This was led by the, the Finance Committee, attended by the School Committee, Board of Selectmen, town staff, maybe the Board of Library Trustees, not sure, but. And the, the topic of that, that, that financial forum was to come up with revenue enhancement ideas. Anything and everything was on the table. It was, it was a very good meeting. The revenue enhancement ideas we were looking for was one-time or ongoing revenue streams. Out of that meeting, there was, I'm sorry, I don't have copies here, but there's quite a list of initiatives that came out of that meeting. The second highest initiative and priority after cell towers was advertising and billboards. At that time, in 2010, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts did not allow electronic billboards. Since that time in 2000, in the fall of 2012, the state passed a law allowing electronic billboards. And a vendor, Clear Channel, identified, had identified a location, came back to the town manager with a proposal. To have that proposal accepted has to come before town meeting, because it would be a zoning change that needed to be to our current existing bylaws. And personally, I pressed the town manager for the last two years to keep pushing this, to see if this was an option in some revenue, so you may have heard, heard us talking about over the last two years. The Selectmen role, as identified in this, this financial forum, was to carry forward, is the term that was used, that the Selectmen's were, the Selectmen were designated on this particular initiative to carry forward. And that's why it took two years to do. So the reason that we're putting this up for indefinite postponement, what has happened in the last two weeks, there's been a door-to-door campaign that, in my opinion, was set up to prevent having discussion at this, at this town meeting. There was scare tactics and incomplete information that was put out there, and, and it struck me as eerily similar to a campaign that we all went through when there was proposed potential lifestyle retail center or mall, whatever you want to call it. It was, the, the biggest thing that struck me on that campaign was, on both campaigns, was very similar, was it, it pit neighbor against neighbor. I received some phone calls...
Point of order? Point taken. This is getting personal. Please stick with the issue.
Certainly. So, the, the bottom line is that the, there was, the campaign caused enough of a stir within this community, so that the proponent pulled out and said that they did not, at that point, want to go forward any longer with that. So we're putting forward to indefinitely postpone at this point.
Further discussion. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Brown, Precinct 4. I will make a prediction that within five years, it will be in Woburn. And I base that on Woburn's history of accepting things. And I know that both the mayor and somebody else over there has said no, but I will guarantee it will be. If you, people are familiar with what is now Inwood Park, the developer came to the town, city of Woburn, and offered them a fire truck. The zoning got changed.
Mr. Goldie.
Just point of information on that. I had requested that the town manager reach out to the town of Woburn, and the, the mayor of, the city of Woburn, I'm sorry. The mayor reached out in a letter saying that they had turned down this exact type of proposal recently, and asked us to do the same.
Further discussion. Ms. Binda.
Angela Binda, Precinct 5. I will be voting in favor of indefinite postponing Article 10 for several reasons. First, I do not believe that there was adequate reason to rush this article onto the January Town Meeting warrant without proper vetting. The state will not even begin accepting applications for electronic billboards for several months. There is no deadline for submitting applications, nor any limit to the number of applications the state will accept and prove. There was time to do this properly. Second, there was a lack of notification of the public hearing to residents of Border Road, West Street, and other neighbors whose property values and the enjoyment of their property would be adversely affected by this zoning. While the town was not legally required to personally notify these residents, this inaction is inconsistent with the position taken by Selectmen, that property owner rights are paramount, and that residents deserve to know about and to be able to speak on actions that will affect their property. A disregard for these West Street neighborhood residents was shown, and the need for adequate property owner notification and input appears to be a situational condition and not a standard. Lastly, and most importantly, the lack of open discussion by the Board of Selectmen, and the decision by two Selectmen to enter into private negotiations with Clear Channel on behalf of the town, but without knowledge of these proceedings by the full Board of Selectmen, is disturbing. This is not indicative of the open and transparent town government I have come to expect and value in Reading. To state it plainly, this is an example of really poor customer service. For these reasons, I hope this town meeting body indefinitely postpones Article 10.
Further discussion. None appearing. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor, is there another hand? All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. It is indefinitely postponed. Did we have business under Article 2? A, excuse me, yeah, Article 2, was there an instructional motion? Mr. Van Magnus. Okay. Mr. Van Magnus moves that we take Article 2 from the table. Oh, excuse me.
Let's not, at this point. The instructional motion that I had dealt with establishing a committee to handle the library project. The town manager has already addressed that. I would consider that instructional motion not to have been made or proposed, so take it off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Goldie. We have a motion to adjourn, signee die. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? This town meeting stands adjourned, signee die.